I'd like to call the meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees for September 2016 to order. Help me start the meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have our roll call on recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter and Imran Khan.
Welcome. The next item is our open forum. The open forum section of the board meeting is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case the chair has the ability to limit that time. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door before the meeting, prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be civil and respectful and should not address matters of a personnel nature, matters related to individual personnel of the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this forum to personnel matters or matters that are being addressed through established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise subject to board review. Is there anybody for the open forum session? We have no registered speakers for tonight. The next item on the agenda is awards and recognitions. I understand we have no awards and recognitions that we're going to recognize tonight. I'm sure there are some out there somewhere. Next, we'll have our Student Senate Report from Student Senate President Donnie Whitten. Mr. Whitten, please come forward and tell us about the start of school.
I'm Donnie Whitten, the new Student Senate President for the 2016-2017 school year. A little bit about me. I spent seven years in the Army as a combat engineer and an explosive ordnance disposal technician. It's kind of like the bomb squad. After the Army, I spent another seven years as a Union Boilermaker before I decided to return to college and found a home here in JCC. I appreciate the opportunity to address you on behalf of the Student Senate and the rest of our Cavaliers. You'll notice I use the term Cavalier frequently, and I'll get to that reason why in a moment. But first, I'll tell you what we've done so far. Our Executive Board came together over the summer, and we decided to be successful, we need to fill the Senate with able, willing, and diverse senators that can each bring a unique excitement and energy. After an immense team effort, we did just that. We filled our Student Senate and had more students participate in our voting process than ever before. As usual, some students have had conflicts and had to step down, but multiple applications are already underway to fill those spots, and it seems as though we'll have a full Student Senate for the first time. You will hear me saying Cavalier all year because we want to build our brand. We have to get excited about being a Cavalier. While recruiting new senators, I told everyone, if you don't sound excited, then they won't be excited about it either. Big schools do not need to convince their students to go to a basketball game. Those games are heavily attended, even by non-alumni, because they are proud to associate with their brand. That pride comes from a sense of success, inclusion, and cohesion. We have all the tools needed here at JCC to build our brand already at our disposal. We have a faculty, staff, and administration that actively tries to provide and improve resources to achieve academic and co-curricular success. We have sports teams that compete at the national level. We have clubs and orgs like Model UN and Debate that are second to none. JCC sells itself. We sell the Cavalier memorabilia, but we want to sell the Cavalier brand. This year, we're going to become Cavaliers. We have a laundry list of things we'd like to accomplish this year. I think a mass effort on our primary goal will lead to tackling every subsequent goal in force. With the Senate leading the way on building the Cavalier brand, we will see a new level of excitement, communication, and resolve. I hope we can carry this excitement to the administration to look at issues such as textbooks, financial aid, potentially a nap room, and fitness and wellness resources. I have been reaching out to different administrators and subject matter experts across campus. We want to ensure that as we look at affecting change on campus, our efforts are directed towards area in which change is indeed possible. Right now, we have 30 bright senators waiting to eagerly shine in all areas of this campus, but it's my job to provide them focus to make change possible. We can turn those 30 bright lights into one very powerful laser. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you and share our high hopes for this coming year. I'm sure that every year, there is a Student Senate President that stands before you with a similar rhetoric and none greater than the last. I don't propose that I'm greater than the last. Naivety isn't my specialty. I propose that the students of JCC are progressively better and more engaged. They have been waiting. When I walk through the fountain square any afternoon, we'll reveal a mass of students that are longing. They have been waiting. They have been wanting. They are looking for a way to come together. They are looking for a way to become Cavaliers. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. There may be questions for you. I know. We appreciate your enthusiasm. We'd love to have student senators come to the meeting and be recognized at any time you want to come, and you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. But we do appreciate it. We understand, I think, if it's a community college, it's harder to keep people on campus and keep them engaged and bring enthusiasm level to where we'd like to have it, but you've obviously got a great start. I think Trusty Cross has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Donnie, good to see you. I'm not sure we've met. This past weekend, I had the privilege to attend the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees meeting in liberal Kansas. We talked about in one of our committee meetings about what our schools are known for, or what we think our respective school is known for. I like your use of the term Cavalier brand. If you said so, maybe I was looking at something else, but I didn't quite catch what the Cavalier brand means to you or what this school means to you. May I ask you that?
Well, the Cavalier brand means to me a continued pursuit of success, achieving excellence and not giving up. You know, I've heard a lot of different stories from people at this institution that have come from all, you know, different walks of life and tried different academic pursuits at different institutions, and, you know, for one reason or another, they didn't work. But here, it seems that the environment is such that people find a way to make things work. You know, there was Kevin Robertson from last year. He'd take a bus ride, two and a half hours down here, two and a half hours home. I know people who are scraping by, eating rice that they get from the food pantry, but, you know, every time someone reaches out and looks for a way to succeed at this institution, one is provided that I've witnessed so far.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the answer.
Anybody else? We'll look forward to the...
Donnie, what's going to be... I mean, you've been on the bomb squad, Boilermaker, and now you're going to be Student Senate President. Which one is going to be the most challenging, do you think?
Well, I will say that in this occupation or this venture, you get a lot more time to think on decisions before you have to make them.
Thank you very much for your service, and let us know if you see things we can do for veterans that we're trying to do that we're not doing as well as we should. Look forward to hearing from you each month at our meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, would you like to follow that on our college lobbyist report?
We really do need to look at the placement of my report on the agenda, because I used to follow Bruce Hartman, who would come in here and talk about all these great things that were happening at the Nerman, and now Mr. Whitten comes in here. Maybe I could go a little later.
I'm not sure it would matter what order we put you in.
You're probably correct about that. It's been a quiet month at Lake Wobegon, and actually, I'm looking forward. I think he's here for one more show at the college this coming year, and so my wife and I will be here present for Mr. Keeler. Month of August revenues were once again down about $10 million. That brings our two-month total into the fiscal year, $25 million off of revenue projections. And again, we'll continue to watch that trend, if you will, because that will determine what happens with the governor's request to state agencies to look at what a 5% cut would look like, and I don't anticipate there being immediate action on that cut, but I certainly think before the end of the year, we'll be looking at some form of allotments or cuts as we approach the legislative session. No guarantee, but things don't look good right now. September and October are always the months where the late filers pay, and so there's opportunities to see some improvement there in those two months. I would acknowledge or at least note that the sales tax revenues are down this month, but the individual income tax returns are up, and so that is, again, a trend that we watch to kind of just watch which revenue stream is producing the dollars for the state budget. The governor has made a request to a number of folks via letter and through a press announcement for some input on K-12 funding. We've now had a couple of years of block grant funding, which was intended to be temporary for the K-12 school systems. I think we might have a year extension on that, and so the governor has issued a request for some input on that. That's being received differently by different groups, but the request was broad. The request went to school administrators. It went to economic developers. It went to organizations like the Farm Bureau, like the Kansas Policy Institute, Americans for Prosperity, the Kansas Chamber of Commerce. So it's not just a request to school administrators for input, and I think that the important thing is, is those that come to that table and have that discussion will certainly be first in line when it comes to the debate that will occur in January, and I think that will be something that we spend a lot of time on next session. It clearly is something that needs to be finalized, finished, and moved forward, and we won't know what a lot of that looks like until the Supreme Court gives its opinion. They're going to hear the case on September 21st. It's highly doubtful that they'll issue an opinion, in my opinion, before the November 8th general election. I think that will come later. They could. It's their prerogative, but that will dictate a lot of how things move forward with the conversation and the discussion on the K-12 funding formula. Interestingly, in terms of elections, there's not a lot to discuss right now other than folks are having forums, people are knocking on doors, and the campaigning is going on in general. As you know, one of the things that I've been telling you that likely will dictate how some of the outcomes appear this November are the judicial retention elections, and just by way of update, there's some activity going on there. You've probably seen in the news that there are four former governors that have come together to support the retention of the Supreme Court justices. There are more people up for retention than just the five Supreme Court justices, but that's the high-profile retention case out there. There are other groups that have been very visible and vocal over the past month to release a few of those judges, and we're going to continue to see that, those efforts ramp up over the course of the next month and a half. The other important thing to note is the governor made his fourth of four appointments to the Kansas Supreme Court Nominating Commission. The governor has four appointments to that body, and there are five lawyer recommended or suggested appointees to that nominating commission, and the question is, is that enough to tip the balance in favor of appointing a more conservative-type justice? So those are the issues that are out there, kind of floating around, and all play into the final analysis. And then let me talk a little bit briefly about CAPERS. As you're well aware, the fourth payment to the CAPERS program was withheld last year in the last part of the fiscal year in order to make the state budget work. The rumblings as of this last month are that chances are likely that they will extend the deadline for when that payment was due. Still has an 8% interest rate attached to the repayment, but in fact, the governor, even after a brief press availability, made the comment that that 8% looks pretty good compared to some of the returns that CAPERS is getting right now in the market, and so it's only good, I guess, if we make the payment, or the longer we extend the payment, the more interest accrues, but I do think that that is worth noting, that the returns that are expected on the investments may be significantly less than the 8% that the state is paying on the loan. That brings us sort of to the issues that we'll be looking at next year, and it's a little bit early to base predictions, but we know for certain that we will be spending a lot of time talking about a K-12 funding formula. That then plays into the overall discussion about the state budget. We have seen, as you are fully aware, you folks sitting around this table are very engaged in the public policy process and pay attention to what's going on in your local area, but probably more across the state as well, and we will see some different folks returning to Topeka. That means the conversations are going to be a little bit different, and we may be revisiting some of the gun issues. We may be revisiting some of the local control issues, and those are all out there ripe for discussion. We hear some of those bubbling up already in various groups, and so we know that those will be topics to watch for, but I do think that everything will probably revolve around what the school finance portion looks like.
Trusty Lindstrom.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Mr. Carter, you mentioned that state income tax was up, but state sales tax was down for August. I would like to report that Johnson County sales tax for August is up 2.62%, and the only reason I have that is because I get that information from the Johnson County Economic Research, Education Research Triangle, JSR. So good news in Johnson County.
Indeed.
Dr. Cutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carter, what are you hearing statewide about the gun law discussion?
About...
Pardon? The gun law, right to carry, and what's going on around the state these days?
I'm not hearing anything significant. I do think some of the groups that have been impacted are beginning to have those conversations, and I can't say for sure exactly what they look like, but there's two groups that are mainly impacted. The higher education communities, so the college campuses, and there's 36 of those, as well as the public building, the public employees in public building portions, and so I think you'll see some folks having conversations about what may be an extension of the exemption looks like. I think you could see some additional conversations about allowing employers to make those decisions for their employees as part of the employment. Those are the types of things I think you'll see.
Thank you.
What's the earliest that a governor has ever had to impose allotments in a fiscal year that started July 1st? Do you know?
No, I don't. That's a great question.
Have they done it before the end of this calendar year?
Well, I'm trying to think.
What does that mean?
Well, an allotment is where the governor has the authority legislatively to remove budget authority and stop spending and take money back from agencies.
Anecdotally, which is how we kind of make laws in Topeka, I can recall a time when I served on the staff of the Board of Regents, and we had a retreat each year in August or July, beginning of August or end of July, and I can recall that at that, at one particular retreat, a couple of folks had to step out because there were allotments that were occurring. So I think, and that was good grief, a long time ago. I hate to admit how long ago that was, but I think that the timing is not necessarily... It depends on how much you take out bonded indebtedness in May when the legislature's heading out of town in June.
I think your comments on the legislature, having some new faces in it, is important and may actually change the focus of our view from the legislative side to the governor's side, because the governor will have a veto-proof majority if he chooses to veto anything that changes priorities in a municipal last several years, so I think maybe that will become more important than it has in the past when the legislature was, had a majority that was calling the shots. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your quiet summer.
Thank you.
We're ready for committee reports. The first committee report is on collegial steering. Ms. Sharp is listed on that. Ms. Sharp had a personal matter that she had to attend to today, so couldn't be here. We did not have a collegial steering meeting because of the schedules of various people, including myself and Stephanie, that could not attend last Tuesday, so we will have a report of our meeting in October. Human Resources, Trusty Ingram.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Human Resources also did not meet last month. We meet every other month, so we will meet on Monday, October 3rd, and I do not have a report as of...
Learning Quality, Trusty Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I just want to apologize to you for cutting you off. I know what allotment meant. I thought maybe our audience could watch, so I was just trying to define that. And if I may ask, how do I get on a committee that doesn't meet? Learning Quality Committee met September 6, 2016, at 8:00 a.m. in this room. I was present, along with the trustee Sandate, a host of other people, you know who you are, including Dr. Sobchak and Dr. McLeod. Dr. McLeod, the Vice President, Academic Affairs and CAO, presented a renewal agreement with the Family Conservancy to renew early head start services for the children enrolled at the Hurst Diner Child Development Center. The program is funded through the Family Conservatory as a part of the EHS Child Care Partnership Grant. The agreement was approved by the committee. Complete details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of this board packet. An agreement was presented for informational purposes for the renewal of the Facility Use Agreement with the OHLA Medical Center, for the use of the OHLA Health Education Center, or OHC, Simulation Lab, and Success Center Conference Room. The Learning Quality Committee reviewed the aforementioned agreement, which will be discussed by the Management Committee at their September meeting. Lenora Cook, interim Associate Vice President, Instruction, presented a course modification effective for the academic year 2017 and '18 for the ADMJ 121 Introduction to the Administration of Justice course, which was recently approved by the Educational Affairs Committee. The modifications will enable the course to better align with the curriculum being offered at other Kansas colleges, and the requested modifications will be sent to the full board for approval and can be seen subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of this board packet. An enrollment report describing how the college tracks student enrollments throughout the semester was given by Mr. Randy Weber. Co-chairs of the Strategic Enrollment Team, SET, Paul Kyle, Dean of Student Services and Jim Lane, Dean of Arts, and Humanities discussed the Strategic Enrollment Team, goals and strategies for achieving them. An update on AQUIP, HLC, and JCC accreditation was presented by Sherri Barrett, Director of Outcomes Assessment, and John Clayton, Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness, Planning, and Research. The college is accredited by the Higher Learning Commission and AQUIP, is the college's chosen pathway to accreditation. The college is currently preparing the Systems Portfolio in preparation for an onsite team visit by peer evaluators. The Systems Portfolio is due on June 1, 2016, and the college will receive a Systems Appraisal Feedback Report performed by the evaluators by fall of 2017. The comprehensive site visit for the campus will be April 30 through May 2, 2018. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Questions for Trusty Cross? If not, thank you, and we'll move to the Management Committee. Dr. Cutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management Committee did meet on Wednesday, September 7. Trustees Cross and Lindstrom are present, along with a large contingent of staff. We received several reports. The first was from Dr. McLeod, presented information on a facility use agreement at OHC, Occupational Health Education Center. For those that are wondering what that stands for?
OHLA.
And...
OHLA.
The OHLA Occupational Health Education Center. Thank you. We should maybe use them more often. And we do have an agreement with the OHLA Medical Center at OHC, and so Dr. McLeod briefed us on that. We had three outstanding reports. The first was by Chris Gray, who gave us an update on our marketing plan, and each of these reports were very, very extensive, and Chris did a magnificent job talking about the shift, actually going back historically and talking about our efforts toward traditional branding, toward digital branding, toward community engagement, and how we're shifting that focus to move the brand, and I know that Chris was pretty excited to hear the Student Senate report about advancing the Cavalier brand, and Chris gave a fabulous report on the realignment of the staff and the efforts that we have to move our college forward in the marketplace. Karen Martley gave a report on continuing education and also our small business program. It's amazing, again, a very long, extensive report. Each of these reports are marketing pieces in themselves, and the board should be aware that in our continuing education and small business program, we have contracts with over 101 community agencies for ongoing continuing education, and staff development for those programs, so an outstanding, outstanding report. Dr. Jay Anthele highlighted our sustainability program and focused on the power switch program to reduce energy usage, and we've had some fabulous results. I hope that you look into our sustainability program more seriously than perhaps we have looked at it on a day-to-day basis, because later this year, I think it is, we'll receive the award, a climate leadership award presented by the U.S. Green Building Center, and what's significant about that, like our debate team and like our UN teams, we compete nationally with four-year schools, and I think Jay had indicated at the dinner the other night that the winner a year ago was Michigan State, and so when you go up against these four-year schools that perhaps have more resources, more history with sustainability and energy, it really places our college, I think, at a very benchmark position across the country, but all three of those reports were just really outstanding. Rachel Leers gave the Budget Monthly Update, which also was very outstanding. She stated that the auditors have begun their work on fiscal year 2015 financial statements and that a proposed budget calendar for '17-'18 is being developed. Mitch Borchers presented the Soul Source Report, as well as a summary of awarded bids between $25,000 and $100,000. The summary of that report is found in page four of your packet. Rex Hayes provided an update on the capital infrastructure program, and that report begins on 13 of your packet. We do have four recommendations to bring forward to you tonight. The first is Debbie Rulo, Director of Continuing Education, presented information regarding an update facility use agreement with Edgerton Land Holding, LLC. This agreement is related to access and use of the facility parking lot for commercial driver's license. This agreement addresses the college's need to have ongoing access to a location for its truck driver curriculum. I think for those of you that have been on the board for a while, we started out, Dr. Sobchak, I think, with a partnership with...
I don't believe North Point.
Well, before that, weren't we with Community College?
Metropolitan.
Metropolitan Community College.
Sure.
And the program has become so strong for us that we need more flexibility on access to the driving range, and this whole agreement also enters into a partnership with the state in so that we will be able to renew CDL licenses as well as train additional ones in the training program. So it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees authorize the college to enter into the amended and related facility use agreement with Edgerton Land Holding Company, LLC, and I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to enter into the amended and restated facility use agreement.
I would also like to add, Mr. Chair, that that does include, Dr. Sobchak reminded me of our classroom facility with North Point. That's included in this lease agreement, so that's a very strong partnership we have.
Is there any discussion or any questions? Trusty Ingram?
I had one question. Pardon me. I was just curious to the cost we pay and how that is actually determined and who else might share in that cost.
I think I can start that answer, and then maybe...
Debbie Rulo is...
Debbie would like to answer that.
Spring action. There we go.
I just wanted to answer to see if I remembered, but Debbie, please.
I'm sure the president doesn't fully trust you, Jerry, so we'll hear from Debbie.
Well, the cost associated that we're talking about, one is the cost to build the range, and there's an approximate cost of $200,000 to actually build the range, and the split would be, it's about 44% that JCC would take, which is about $88,000, and $112,000 through the state of Kansas, the Department of Revenue, and that split was determined by how much usage we actually will have on the... And that split was determined by how much usage we actually will have on the range throughout a week.
Thank you.
And then the other cost would be the monthly cost, and that is associated with snow removal, taxes, and maintenance. And our cost will be $566 a month, and that's approximately 20% of what the total cost is per month, and then the state will pick up 80%.
Debbie, in the Management Committee, I think you indicated that considerable amount of that cost is expected to be retrieved through increased enrollment in the program with additional driver training.
We anticipate, just with our open enrollment, that we could cover the cost to build the range within two years. We are really focusing on doing more contract training, and so the more contracts we do, the more we'll retrieve that money a lot quicker.
Thank you. We had the opportunity to tour last month at the Logistics Park, and it was really a fantastic tour, and I'm totally supportive, I just had that question, so thank you.
It's very close, and when you go out the doors, it's just to the left, right now there's a field.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Any other discussion or questions? If not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose no. Motion carried unanimously.
The second recommendation is...
Jerry made it, and Lee seconded it. Sorry.
The second recommendation is for the renewal of the annual contract for Government Affairs Liaison Services. In your packet, you'll see the results of the number of proposals that we received. In some cases, the proposers suggested the state level only and not the federal, and in other cases, we had federal representation but not state. And we had a couple that indicated both, but after a strong review, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for Government Affairs Liaison Services with the Carter Group, Inc., at an amount not to exceed $78,827.28 plus expenses pursuant to college travel policies, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to renew the contract with Carter, the Carter Group. Any questions or discussion? This is the third year of a four-year contract and the annual renewal. If not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no?
The next is for annual housekeeping services. Again, you will see the bid proposals in your packet, and again, after considerable review and discussion, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from ABM Onsite Services for an annual contract for housekeeping services in the amount of $720,318.12, plus an additional $30,000 for services that may be requested on an as-needed basis for a total annual expenditure not to exceed $750,318.12, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract with ABM Onsite Services. This will be the first year of a four-year potential renewal. Any questions or discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose no. Motion carried.
Our final recommendation is for an annual contract for Prime Vendor for Food and Food Supplies. Again, you have those bid results in your packet. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for Prime Vendor Food, for Food and Food Supplies with Cisco Food Services of Kansas City, Inc., at an annual expenditure not to exceed $750,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation to do Food and Food Supplies with Cisco Food Services of Kansas City, Inc. Any discussion or questions? If not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Questions for Dr. Cook? Trustee Lindstrom or Trustee Cross?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank Richard Fort, Chris Gray, and everyone else that helped put together the tour today of the ATB and WLV building. Just want to say thank you.
We had a tour before our meeting of those who could attend of our Career and Technical Education Programs, HVAC, Automomotive, Electrical Automation, HVAC welding, and I'm sure I missed some, but very interesting. All right, next item on the agenda is the Treasurers Report. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Treasurers Report is in the board packet. It is for the report that ended July 31st, 2016. Some items of note include, at page one of the Treasurers Report, is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. As of July 31st, 8.3% of the college's new fiscal year had expired. State grant payments of $10.8 million were received during the August period and will be reflected in next month's report. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of July 31st, 2016, in all funds was $82.5 million, which is approximately $8.6 million higher than at the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is therefore the recommendation, Mr. Chair, of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers Report for the month ended July 31st, 2016, subject to audit, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the Treasurers Report. Questions? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Lee. Monthly Report to the Board, President Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. A new semester is off and running. I think the joys of the beginning of every semester is that there's a definite buzz in the air, as so much energy fills the campus with everyone coming back with a full head of steam. So, it's absolutely a wonderful time to be on a college campus. So many exciting projects are happening, and for example, I'm going to cite one of those, and that is the opening of our COLAB, which is kind of short for Collaboration Laboratory. On page one of your September Monthly Report to the Board, and I hope you get a chance to review this, some fantastic information in here, please note some of the updates on the programs in our Career and Technical Education, as they talk about internships and outreach to the, to the community. It's an outstanding report. You can see just a, it's a small sample of the amount of almost 40 activities planned and scheduled for the fall in the COLAB under the leadership of Kristi McWard. That's on page one. While these are all terrific, you may want to highlight the December 14th capstone presentations as students will present their final project for their computer information systems class. This is absolutely a terrific experience. As these students get up there, they show you a semester's work as they work very closely with a local business or a local organization. You may remember, I think a year ago, we had Habitat for Humanity in here with a group of students trying to address a challenge, a technical challenge with their organization. Enrollment, as of Tuesday, we are slightly up versus the same time one year ago. We're up 1% in students and headcount and about .1% with regard to credit hours. We may be one of the few institutions across the state that will not have experienced some form of enrollment decline this year. We hope these numbers stay where they are for, up to the 20th day of the month, which is rapidly approaching. But keep in mind, despite the 20th day of the month, which is that sacred day we all use to record enrollment, we will continue doing College Now, our Quickstep programs. We have short-term courses that start throughout the semester, and don't forget Winterum. I recently was interviewed by a ledger reporter here, a student newspaper, who was a high school student, who was coming here for Quickstep, and her excitement of being on a college campus was so much fun, and she did a great job for the interview. I'm going to shift gears here on this report, and I will, I will tell you there will be no lightning round tonight, and I know that's a disappointment.
We're sad, too.
I can tell. But we're going to refocus the rest of this report on a very important topic for the school. And it's a topic that Trustee Cross alluded to earlier when he gave his report from Learning Quality, and that's regards to accreditation process. And on our campus, that's certainly ramping up. You know, in today's world of higher ed, this process seems to have gained some real teeth. For example, this past week, ITT Technical Institute, a proprietary school, received sanctions from the U.S. Department of Ed, which resulted in the closure of that school. Now, this is no small deal. They had 130 campuses, 130 campuses in the United States, 35,000 students, and 8,000 employees. And this wasn't some fly-by-night deal. This school was founded in 1946, and then it went public, was an IPO, in 1965. And so, overnight, they were pretty much shut down. We believe that we are in great shape here at Johnson County Community College to take on this accreditation process and excel, especially since it's under the leadership of Dr. Korbe. The, the odds are certainly, we think the odds are in our favor to have a fantastic report and site visits that are coming up. But this is a difficult process for everyone to follow, especially if you're not exposed to it every day. And, you know, for example, what exactly is the U.S. Department of Ed doing in all of this? What is this accrediting body that we have to deal with? What is AQUIP? How long does this take to happen, and when do things happen? So, I invited Sherri Barrett, our Director of Outcomes Assessment, to provide the board with an overview of our assessment process, what we'll be doing over the months ahead, and also what will be the expectations from members of our board as we go forward. So, Sherri?
If I may, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, Dr. Sobchak did approach me about this report. I felt it would be important to include, so you can blame me, not Dr. Sobchak, for including this. Also, a brief comment, Mr. Chair, at the KECT meetings, KECT meetings, this was a topic of great discussion, as a lot of our sister and smaller schools struggle with this process.
That's right.
Thank you for being here.
I'd like to just kind of give you an overview to start. I know many of you are more familiar with this process than others, but we're going to start with the Department of Ed, and they, their involvement with accreditation in the United States goes back to the fact that they recognize the accrediting agencies themselves. So, when we talk about the Higher Learning Commission and SAC, Southern Association of Schools and Colleges, or Western states, they're all approved by the Department of Ed. There are six regional accrediting bodies which go by the region they're in. We are in the Higher Learning Commission, which covers 19 states, goes up as far as Canadian border and down through Arizona. We are the largest, we're part of the largest accrediting body in the United States with close to 2,000 schools that are in that region. So, you see up there a list of all the schools that are part of, part of the accrediting bodies that are regional. Ours is the Higher Learning Commission. The Higher Learning Commission defines six, three pathways, and the six accreditors overall have to adhere to a set of guidelines that are decided upon by the Department of Education. So, even though there's differences between the accrediting bodies, they all have to meet the same criteria. Within that open pathways, institutions that have no significant changes, they have good standing within the accrediting body, they can choose an open pathway. They choose one big quality initiative once every five years within their cycle to be working on. The standard pathway is for those schools that maybe have some challenges, they've had changes in administration, they've had some governance issues that have come up. And then there's the AQUIP pathway, which is what we are on as an institution, and that's continuous quality improvement. We are always working on projects and activities that improve us as an institution.
So, Sherri?
Yes.
So, if you go back to those three options, so, any college could pick any one of those options on their pathway to accreditation?
Um, yes and no. So, if you are a college in good standing, you can choose either the open pathway or you can choose AQUIP pathway. The Higher Learning Commission puts you on the standard pathway if they think you need additional monitoring, there are more requirements of the standard pathway. You have to report more often. For ourselves, right now, we're on the AQUIP pathway. Once we successfully complete our next review, if we want to change pathways to open pathway at that time, we can do that.
And what exactly does that mean, the AQUIP pathway?
We're going to get there. I'm going to show you.
You don't know?
He does know, because he's been briefed. I just wanted to make sure that you understood the complexity, because, you know, this is a government bureaucracy, and so, of course, it has to be complex. These are some of the general things that we have to cover when we start talking about accreditation. There is what's called assumed practices. So, this is something that all accrediting bodies say, we assume as an institution of higher learning, you're doing these things. If you don't make an assumed practice, you're already sunk. It's the gold standard, that's, that's the minimum that we expect you to do. You cannot miss an assumed practice. The criteria for accreditation itself, there's five of them within the Higher Learning Commission. We'll go over those in a moment. All colleges and universities, whether they're Johnson County Community College, KU, UMKC, anybody in our region, has to adhere to those criteria. The AQUIP categories, which you hear a lot about AQUIP, those are six student learning outcomes, or that's what I would call it, six areas of the college in which we are constantly doing continuous quality improvement. So, it might be helping students learn, or meeting other stakeholder needs, or managing our knowledge information systems, et cetera. Those AQUIP categories also marry into our criteria for accreditation. I should have got one of those waters. So, and the last piece, which has grown substantially over the last several years, is federal compliance. When I first started as a peer reviewer for the Higher Learning Commission, which I've been doing close to 15 years, we had about a page and a half that was federal compliance. It's now a 25-page worksheet. Okay? It's a massive report. So, that's all part of accreditation. Our current timeline for what we're trying to accomplish here on campus is, right now, we have project teams that have been working since last September to put together our systems portfolio, which is, I like to think of it as our argument, our evidence that we're sending to the Higher Learning Commission that say we have met all these criterion. October, we'll be doing some editing and revising by a select team of people that are very well-versed in their accreditation requirements. Late October, early November, we're going to involve the Cabinet to assist us in some areas that only they know best. An example would be, as we build our, our portfolio, they first ask you, what are your processes on campus? Once you define those, they say, what are the results that you have in those processes? And the last piece is, what are the improvements that you have planned? And nobody knows better than the Cabinet what those improvements are. So, we'll be going to the Cabinet and getting feedback from them. In December, we will finalize that document. We'll give it to our AQUIP Steering Committee to review, we'll give it to the Cabinet to review and comment on. In January and February, sometime in that timeframe, we will share it with the entire college community for comment. Make sure we didn't miss someplace, make sure somebody doesn't have information that would be really vital to making our argument for us. April and May, we'll have some final edits by an external editor that we have engaged to do this, because you don't want me doing it. And then finally, June 1st, we'll have a submission to the Higher Learning Commission. It's all electronic, and it will go to them electronically along, and we have to do this within 125 pages, which if you think about the complexity of Johnson County Community College, that's not a whole lot of paper. But we are allowed to provide as much evidence and links and additional documents as part of that 125 pages. So, somebody asked, what's the criterion? Criterion one is mission. Are you very straightforward with your mission? Do you publish it? Do your students know it? Do your faculty know it? Does the Board of Trustees know it? Criterion two, do you conduct yourself with integrity, ethical, and responsible conduct? Criterion three, teaching and learning quality resources and support. Do you support with appropriate resources the faculty and the programs here on campus to accomplish what they're trying to do? Criterion four is also teaching and learning evaluation and improvement. Do you evaluate the faculty? Do you evaluate your programs? What we did with program review here on campus in the last several years is part of this process that we've accomplished quite a bit. And criterion four, or five, excuse me, is the resources planning and institutional effectiveness. Are you using your resources wisely? Are you planning for the future? How effective are you? Are you benchmarking yourself against external agencies, against external schools, et cetera? So, the AQUIP categories marry into the criterion itself. There are six of them. There used to be nine, so we're happy that they've kind of pulled them down to six. And they are very similar in their scope, helping students learn. That's our primary mission as an institution. So, when we put together projects, a good example is Winterum Term that's coming up. That's an AQUIP project for us right now, and the implementation of Winterum Term is something that we can consider one of our continuous quality improvement projects. Meeting student, other key stakeholder needs. How do we address the community? How are we doing on continuing education? The foundation work that's going on. Value in employees. Employees are our most important thing that we have here at the college. How are we addressing their needs? How are we doing professional development for them? How are we hiring them? How are we ensuring that they meet the credentials needed for their job? Planning and leading, how's the Cabinet doing? How are our leadership on campus doing? Are you planning for the future? Knowledge management and resource stewardship. We generate a lot of information through all of our systems, through Banner, through the CRM processes, et cetera, continuing education. How are we managing that? Do we use that information wisely? And finally, just a quality overview that focuses, how are we as an institution constantly and continuously improving ourselves? So, what is our current status? We are fully accredited. Since our last systems portfolio, which was four years ago, the midpoint of the eight-year cycle, we have aligned our strategic planning processes and our AQUIP projects themselves. So, all our AQUIP projects come out of strategic planning. We have revamped program review processes for both a comprehensive and annual component, which by the way, was one of the assumed practices that we discovered we weren't quite up to snuff on, so we wanted to make sure we improved that. We've implemented a new general education assessment plan, another requirement of the Higher Learning Commission. We launched a student pathways this fall. That was one of the AQUIP projects as well. And finally, another AQUIP project was we, this fall, launched an administrative program review. So, we've done a lot of work since our last portfolio. Currently, this, the current portfolio is due June 1st. We'll receive feedback on that in the fall of 2017. At that point in time, we'll repair, prepare a re- At that point in time, we'll repair, prepare a response and make some initiatives on campus in preparation for a site visit, which will be April 30th through May 2nd, 2018. Now, the comprehensive quality review is really new for us, and so no matter how long you've served here, you probably haven't gone through this. Once we became an AQUIP institution, at the time we became, they didn't do comprehensive quality reviews. They did what they called a quality checkup, which is they sent two guys who had a good time for a couple of days, and you convinced them you were doing well, and they went home. Federal government didn't like that. The Department of Ed audited the Higher Learning Commission and said, that's really probably not going to be ensuring that you have quality to your institution, so let's rethink this. So they came up with a quality review, which is more closely aligned to what they do with open and standard pathways. We will have approximately five to seven, just depending on, being a large school, I'm expecting seven, site visitors. There'll be peer reviewers from like institutions. So chances are, they will be probably from community colleges, large community colleges within our region. They'll have a three-day visit. They will have all kinds of meetings. They will have read our portfolio. They'll have read the comments from the reviewers. They will have read our response to that. So they will come in knowing a lot about us, and their primary role is to confirm what we've said is accurate. So what's going to be the role of trustees? What's your role in all of this? You will meet with the HLC review team. They will ask for meetings with you. The kind of, the kind of questions and things that they will be talking about with the Board of Trustees, they'll look at governance and structure. They'll ask you questions about how the, how are you elected? How do you govern as a board? How does the college govern as a board? Appropriate oversight. Do you approve the annual budget? That's one of the, in the stated assumed practice, that is something you're supposed to be doing. Do you have the responsibility to engage or dismiss the chief academic officer, or chief, excuse me, not academic, chief executive officer?
I prefer the first one.
You prefer the first one? Are you sufficiently autonomous? This is a big issue, actually, that's come up several times in the recent past. Are you autonomous to make decisions in the best interest of the institution and to ensure its integrity? This is actually one of the areas in which ITT got hit, as well as several other schools. They weren't, their boards weren't autonomous. They were being influenced by other, other agencies. They were being influenced by other stakeholders. They want to make sure that your deliberations, as they look at meetings you have, do they reflect the priorities and preserve the institution? They're going to look at board decisions in terms of reasonableness, and do they reflect the interest of the internal and external constituencies? Are you paying attention to your community? Are you paying attention to your students? They're going to look and see if you're independent from undue influence. Is Topeka, does Topeka have influence on you that's not appropriate? Also, do you delegate day-to-day management of the institution to the administration? And do you expect faculty to oversee academic matters? Those are some of the boundaries that have been set that we know is part of shared governance. So those are the areas in which they're going to question the board. As a heads up. So, questions about this process? It is very complex.
You want to make comments for Dr. Sobchak?
I just want, perhaps you could share with us. That was terrific. Could you share with us a little bit about your background?
Sure. So I am what you would call an accreditation geek. I'm a peer reviewer for the Higher Learning Commission and actually some other specialized accrediting bodies as well. So I make site visits to other schools. I come make schools nervous. We're like the IRS. We're here to help.
You did the ITT one, didn't you?
I did not do the ITT one. But I will tell you, without revealing the name of the school, I did pay a site visit this past February to a school in, outside of Chicago in Illinois. And you want to talk about a system that's in chaos. You know, the Illinois government has not given funding to any of the schools in Illinois for the last academic year. They've just done some stopgap, but they're hurting. I mean, it was a tough visit because they, you have to show appropriate resources, and that's hard to do when the government doesn't step up, when the state government doesn't step up with budgeting. So I've been a peer reviewer for about 15 years. I do both system portfolios. That's where I read in advance and give comment. I make site visits. Usually if I'm invited on a site visit, it's because you're going to get tagged on assessment. You have been doing assessment of student learning at the level you're supposed to, and so they're going to send me to talk to you about that.
Do you have like a nickname, like Terminator or something like that?
Well, I was once called the wicked witch from the south. So, that's possible. But no, actually, it is a very collegial process. I don't want to leave the taste in your mouth that, you know, we're not here to help. We are. The accrediting bodies are here to help. They do have expectations, though, and a lot of the pressure that's been coming has actually come from the federal level. The feds came in and audited HLC, Inspector General paid a visit. They found 45 deficiencies, so they've put pressure on the accrediting bodies, all the accrediting bodies, to live up to their expectations, to actually be more proactive in how they address schools. And so the pressure that we feel down here at the school level really starts at the Department of Education level and comes down toward us.
Dr. Cook, you have a question?
I do. First of all, I'd like a copy of the presentation. I think those slides are fabulous. I'd like to have a copy of that. What I find interesting, and being that you're a world traveler as a, as a, as a peer assessment person, on the, on the AQUIP categories, I find it very interesting that there's nothing on there about trustee development or leadership development. And, and it seems to me that whether we're a state senator, or a state representative, or a U.S. Congressman, or a member of a board of a K through 12 school district, or on the board of any organization, what emphasis do we put on the leadership development of that trustee? And we'll talk about in this case. And yet, the Board of Trustees are ones that make and decisions, as you said on that last page. So I just, you know...
That would actually be under assumed practices. They're saying it's so fundamental to what their expectations are as accrediting bodies...
I'm not so sure, though, Sherri, that most trustees assume that leadership development is, I know we're volunteers, I know we get paid a handsome sum of nothing financially, but it seems to me that when a person makes a commitment to run for a board position, regardless of the organization, they should have an internal commitment. How can I become a better trustee, in this case, and an advocate for my college? That's primarily the only rea, well, that's not the only reason. That's the main reason I'm involved at ACCT is, and we just had a conference call this afternoon, how, how can we help trustees become more effective trustees and advocates for their school, students, faculty, et cetera, et cetera? I just find that interesting.
And it is important.
I think what you're saying is, that as an assumed practice, it is checked and evaluated against the assumed practice criteria.
Correct. It is. For HLC, it's embedded within that document. Like I said, we have had some schools that have come against some criticism based on the lack of training that their trustees had, based on an overreach of trustee boundaries in terms of trying to involve themselves in day-to-day operations and some of those things. And to me, that's just an issue of trustee training. Do they know their role? Do they know what their, what the guidelines are for how they serve? But it is within the assumed practice and is something that they would probably talk to the board about. They will probably ask you, one of the, probably the chair will ask you when they come, how are you all developed? What kind of training do you receive? What kind of orientation do you receive to the college, et cetera?
If I may. Trustee Cross.
Sherri, thank you for this presentation. I, I think it's critical in terms of where the rubber meets the road for our mission. And for a legislative body that seeks to open this up to a market process, I think with Department of Ed and the HLC progressing in this manner, we're, we're in a pretty good position to deal with all of this. So thank you very much.
Certainly.
I just want to echo some of Trustee Cook's comments. And I was taught a long time ago, dealing with expert witnesses or economists, that one way, you always can begin by attacking an economist's arguments as their assumptions. And so I think that the assumptions versus the practical and actual reality are just stark in contrast. Having talked to Dr. Cook many times about this, and then attended a few ACCT things, I mean, we're in such good position here, and the resources we have available to go off and do these assumed practices is wonderful.
Yes.
But I, I think, it's just really a comment. I, I just want to echo that Trustee Cook and I have seen that not all trustees or leadership around the country are in such good shape.
Right. I will be paying, one of the things that we do as peer reviewers when we're asked is, I'm going to do a mock site visit this coming Monday and Tuesday at a Kansas school that I won't name. And I've read through their portfolio and looked at their materials, and this is an area of concern for them. You know, they don't have the resources. They're in a small rural community. They don't have the resources. And, you know, no, all joking aside, this takes resources and time and energy and expertise to, to meet all these criteria, and some schools just don't have the additional resources to put into it. It's difficult, so.
Am I correct in understanding, it's an eight, every eight years you are, go through the reaccreditation process?
Yes. Every four years, you will do a new systems portfolio if you're doing this AQUIP process. So we've completed the one now, or in the process of completing the one that will go in for, in advance of the site visit. Four years out, we'll do a second one that will be an update and say what we're doing and how we've been doing for the...
We started this last year.
We did.
And we will get somewhat completed next year.
Correct.
So it's a three-year process.
To get to every four years.
With a four-year look.
Yes.
I just, I think it's important...
Continuous quality improvement.
Understand how much commitment we have, we do with this. And I think, in reading about the ITT collapse and some of the criticisms that it's a federal government over, you know, overtaking the private sector...
Overreach, uh-huh.
But what this is, is a tension between accountability for, really, the use of federal financial aid dollars, for the most part, that are our tax dollars that we want spent on colleges and universities in an efficient way so that students come out of there with having learned something and being able to apply that in the, in the, in the real world. And so that's the tension, and I'm frustrated, I know that we go through this and spend so much time and effort on it. But I want, one of the things I would hope that you take, back to HLC, is I think we're all concerned on this board about the quality of online teaching and learning that is out there, and in some instances, a race to the bottom of the lowest-cost provider of the less valuable teaching. And that undermines what we do here where we have a commitment to quality.
It actually is one of the things...
And I hope the accreditation process, the accreditation world, is taking that into account when they go to these schools and say, oh, you have, you know, 50% of your classes are online, let's see what the quality is.
Absolutely. And one of the things that led to the downfall of ITT was actually a focus on the accrediting body, which is not one of the six. And they didn't feel like they were exercising appropriate oversight, that they had not looked at the quality of the instructional, you know, that was happening at ITT. So it was pretty much a perfect storm. The accrediting body was being examined, and as part of that, ITT got examined. The Consumer Board got involved as well, Consumer Bureau, for whether or not they were misleading students about their opportunities for job upon graduation, and the amount of debt that these students were carrying at ITT was enormous. ITT students are faced with an unfortunate dilemma. They can either ask to have their student loans forgiven and have to start over someplace else, or they can go ahead and try and transfer, but then their student loans stay in place. And a lot of the schools, because ITT did have, I'll be honest, poor-quality classes, a lot of institutions cannot and will not accept those transfer credits, because they just don't align with good curriculum.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So accreditation is a great opportunity for us to learn about ourselves and, and ways that we, we can improve, too. So we're looking forward to it. And that wraps up the report for this evening.
Any questions for the President? I did want to prove that I read this, and I'm very excited that the, the book for the common read in the English department this year is "In Defense of a Liberal Education", and students will be asked to answer the question, "How does education make you a better human being?" English adjunct professors Lori Paldino and Stacy Petrello are in charge of that. I'm looking forward to reading that book and seeing what I can learn from it. But I think it's great that we have that common unified approach within our English classes. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is old business. I'm not aware of any old business or new business. Report now from Faculty Association, Dr. Arjo, waiting patiently. And without notes.
No notes. Thank you, as always, for the opportunity to address the board. We had our first meeting, so I thought I would kind of give you a quick summary of some of the major discussions we had. We had a couple distinguished guests. Dr. Sobchak and Dr. McCloud were both at our meeting and fielded questions from faculty, for the most part. There was a lot of overlap with these questions, so I kind of picked out three themes. We'll talk most about one of them. As the semester kicked off, there were some problems with shortages of textbooks available to students, so that was a topic of concern. I don't want to belabor that, but I do want to highlight that, I think, as far as I can tell and from what I've heard, the main focus of faculty through all of this was trying to help students deal with getting classes off as smoothly as possible, even if there were some shortages. A lot of ingenious ideas on how to deal with this and keep things going smoothly, so I think the faculty did rise to the occasion pretty nicely. I didn't hear a whole lot of griping, a lot of talk about how can we fix this. Secondly, we had a report from Brett Cooper, who is our treasurer, but he's also on the COPS committee, and so he came and presented an update on what's been happening with the discussion regarding, among other things, the expiration of the exemption and the eventual, we presume, arrival in guns to campus. So this kind of gives me a chance to talk about where the faculty is on that issue, and we're kind of taking a two-pronged approach. We would like to continue to hope to see some changes legislatively, to make the argument any way we can in Topeka, both that, from the majority of the faculty's perspective, we don't want to really see this, but in any case, we do agree with administration and board that this is a local control issue as well, and we would love to hear that message brought to Topeka loudly and clearly and forcefully as often as possible. But on the presumption that expiration, that the exemption will expire, we are beginning to, I'm getting to hear more and more questions about what really will this mean concretely. So we're looking forward to some proposals from the COPS committee involving policy. But there are some questions that may be too fine-grained even for, for that. At the end of the day, when you're teaching a class and you have a shift in kind of how the dynamics can work of this magnitude, we start asking some pretty concrete questions. I know the counselors are going to have a retreat. They're trying to be proactive in thinking, what does it mean to be a counselor when you're confronted with potentially upset students who may or may not have a weapon on them? So we're beginning to ask some of those same questions, and I think this is going to require a lot of discussion as we go forward. You learn a lot in graduate school, how to deal with potentially armed students. They didn't seem to bring that up, as I recall, in graduate school. So we're kind of having to respond to this on the fly like, like everybody else. And some of these issues are kind of going to be tricky. In order to teach effectively, professors need some authority in the classroom. They are used to being able to tell students when they can and cannot speak, whether they can or cannot bring food, things of that sort. How does that play out when you're confronting state law, when something's going on that professor may not be comfortable with? These are tricky questions that we think that we're really going to need to kind of get down to some very specific recommendations at some point. The last thing I wanted to mention touches on a matter that was, already been brought up at the last meeting regarding the facilities master plan. Part of that, as you know, involves some changes into the resource centers. There's been some discomforts among some of the faculty close to some of those resource centers, specifically in science and especially math. I just want to register that those concerns persist, and if anything, are getting a bit more urgent, at least in some parts. So the message I would convey on behalf of some of my colleagues, especially in math, is they think they have a good thing going, they don't want to see it messed up, so they would really like to make sure that whatever happens, their concerns are clearly heard and acknowledged, and I think they are. I know there's been discussions with Dr. Cloud and the directors of the resource centers. I think that's very important, that those discussions continue.[1700.33] So, I will stop there.
Questions for Dennis?
Yes.
What are those concerns that math might have?
The main concern is the location of the math resource center is such that it's close to faculty offices, it is close to the classrooms where a fair number of math classes are taught. So, the students are there right where the resource center is and they like that a lot, the math faculty. So, it seems like a very sort of natural movement from straight from class, oh, I didn't understand something, straight to the resource center to get some help. So, moving things around, moving, it's just, that's the concern.
And that, as I understand it, will be as balanced against having more resources for different subjects in the same resource center and that's what we're struggling with, I think. I think, I think we've heard those concerns at the retreat that Brett was there.
And I don't think this is, anybody's going to construe this as though one side's right and one side's wrong. It's going to be, well, we've got two good things going here, how are you going to decide what's going to best play out?
Do I see a finger up here? Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, dear.
Dr. Arjo, thank you for those comments. I guess, from my viewpoint, when we get to the facilities discussion and going forward, I will be driven by what strategies will cause the most efficient delivery of educational services to the student? And I know when I was with the convention and visitors bureau, there were staff discussions that would say, will the decision we make be easier for our staff? And my response was, I'm not, I'm not as interested in what's easy for the staff as I am for what's efficient and helpful to the client because we're in the business to serve our clients. So, while I appreciate your comments, and I know that if someone has been somewhere for a long period of time, there's a comfortableness that sets in. But I certainly, I will be, I will be, my decision will be based upon, how can we become more efficient in 2016, 17, 18 going forward in delivering the educational service to the student? That doesn't mean I'm not interested in the convenience of the faculty because the faculty certainly needs to be comfortable in the delivery of that. But I think we need a balance of both.
Yeah, and I agree, and let me be very clear. The argument that I'm hearing from the faculty is not that this is bad for us. They think it is best for students that this resource center is where it is because they think we're going to get more students who are coming right out of their classes or visiting other professors. So, I think the argument is very much student-based. It's not simply, oh, we like it here, we don't want to move, we like the view type of thing.
That's fair.
I appreciate you bringing up the security issue because I think we will have a session, a briefing in October, and that is one of the topics that we can do an executive session because it's about the security planning and I suspect there will be something that is public record as well. And we're aware of it and we're certainly, I think this board has made it pretty clear in the past, we would like an extension of the exemption or a repeal of the law as to higher education campuses. I noted this week at the Board of Regents meetings, for the first time I'd have thought about it, there, most of the Regent schools, their presidents live on campus in university housing provided by the government, which means if a person comes to their house, they can't keep them out of their house with a gun at this time. And I, so I think there are at least some things like that where the legislature will take an opportunity to revisit some portions of it and hopefully, we can make some progress. And I want to make it clear, I know that Senator Smith, when we met with him for the legislative breakfast, is those, you know, those gun decals on the door, don't keep guns off campus. And I know there are guns on campus today, but I suspect there will be 10 times, 20 times more on campus come July 1st of 2017. And that worries me, that we are addressing a problem that isn't a problem. And from the standpoint of the Faculty Association, probably the same thing could have been said about the due process bill. We, there were, there was a legislation introduced that wasn't, didn't have to, that wasn't a problem. And there are fraud issues that haven't proven to be a problem. And so, maybe this year, the legislature will spend hopefully some more time on those substantive issues and help figure out the best way around those.
Okay, yeah, we certainly.
Appreciate your support on that.
Thank you.
If I can, Dennis, the discussion we had at the FA regarding the bookstore and getting books out there, I thought was extremely constructive, very positive. Thanks for the information sharing. It's very helpful.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
No, thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks, Lee.
I thought you were.
All right. The next item is a report from the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, Dr. Sobchak mentioned September 20th, the significance of that date. I thought you were referring to the next J-Cert meeting. That's not the, I'm sorry, not the reference? Okay. The next J-Cert meeting is on September 20th and it's at the KU Edwards campus and we meet there at 7:30. We meet quarterly and it's been three, for some reason, for scheduling, it's been three months that I've really had very little reports as it related to this. So, what I thought I'd do is, I contacted Dr. Ralph Richardson. He's a veterinary doctor and he also happens to be CEO out at the K-State Olathe campus and asked him to provide me with some information that he thought might be interesting to the audience here tonight at our meeting. And so, with that, I will pass along some message, a message from Dr. Ralph Wilson, Ralph Richardson. He goes on to say that K-State Olathe Campus celebrated its fifth anniversary this April and he is very appreciative that this would not have been possible without the 1/8 cent J-Cert sales tack to fund the building, which now, which was approved in 2008. He continued to support, the continued support for J-Cert is now helping us expand programs and offerings. Debbie Kirkoff was hired as our Executive Director of initiatives, strategic initiatives in May. Mr. Jim Story joined us as a professor of practice in hospitality management in July. In that position, Story will instruct hospitality management courses as well as coordinate resources and expertise with Kansas, between Kansas State University Hospitality Management Department, K-State Olathe and Johnson County Community College. He will oversee the Metropolitan Initiatives for K-State's Hospitality Management Degree, which is an effort that involves establishing a two-plus-two hospitality management program with Johnson County Community College. Martin Talvera also joined the campus as an Assistant Professor of Sensory Analysis and Consumer Behavior in the position Dr. Talver will conduct sensory analysis research on Sensory and Consumer Research Center at the K-State Olathe Campus. He will instruct on-campus and distance classes at K-State Olathe and Manhattan campuses and perform outreach and services to communities served by both campuses. The number of students and hours are up across all programs at this campus. He goes on to say that we are now offering professional science master's degree. We talked about that briefly before the meeting, which is the first program initiating from the School of Applied and Interdisciplinary Studies. The degree is targeted for working professionals as well as new graduates with bachelor's degree to give them the important mix of technical and business skills to advance their careers. The degree can be earned in person, online, or a combination. It is a mixture of advanced science training, strengthening students' business skills and a capstone experience. In addition, two certificates that are directly related to the degree are available to students. The K-State Olathe team has enrolled 10 students with as many more in the application process to be part of the first cohort this fall. K-State Olathe has hosted nearly 17,000 students in grades kindergarten through 12 at events and programs focused on STEM professionals. Dr. Jackie Spears has moved from Manhattan to K-State Olathe and is helping to lead this initiative. Recently, she partnered with the Shawnee Mission School District on a grant related to effectiveness of project-based learning. This summer, the campus offered free online college courses for 35 high school juniors and seniors interested in the biosciences. The course focused on One Health, a multidisciplinary health approach in which human health, animal health, and the environment are linked to affect each other, linked that affect each other. The new K-State College Advisering Corp., or KSCAC, was founded on a grant in his help, is to help establish a best-fit college and university access program for low-income, underrepresented, and first-generation college students in Johnson and Yandotte Counties. Dr. Bernard Franklin is now headquartered at K-State Olathe, working to grow the initiative, this initiative. A recent launch event for the program was held on August 23rd by Kansas State and the Shawnee Mission School District. Currently, KSCAC advisors are in six area high schools from Shawnee Mission School District, Olathe School District, and the Turner School District. And that completes my report unless you have any questions.
Questions? Thank you.
Next month, I'll approach the KU Edwards and then KU.
Kansas. Yep. Great. Thank you. Dr. Cook, Kansas Association of Community College Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a scheduling conflict, did not attend, but Lee Cross attended and I defer to trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Dr. Cook. I'll note that the KACC met this past Friday and Saturday in liberal Kansas at Seward County Community College. And if I had a dollar for every time I heard someone say, "Where's Jerry Cook? He's a good guy." I could take us all out to dinner. But at any rate, you were missed and lots of people said so. Friday, we had our traditional, I guess it's traditional legislative meeting there in the afternoon. We had a congressional candidate that was present, the area legislators were present. Much was discussed about funding, I think undoing the tax cuts or possibly statewide mill levies and other issues that we talk about in coordination with that group. Community college due process issue was raised again by some. It was expressed that community colleges across the board could expect at least, at least 5% in cuts in the next upcoming legislative session. And even if tax cuts, the tax cut policies of 2012 were repealed, it would take a year or two to recover the funding, which some, I think, were attempting to use as a deterrent to undoing the tax cuts, but my personal outlook would be, let's get started on that. It was a fine day. We, I sat on the Public Policy Committee in which we drafted a statement that touched on, I think, the urgent need that many of our sister institutions have for funding. We had a reception and dinner that night at the Baker Arts Center in liberal Kansas, fabulous facility. Saturday, the Council of Trustees sat in which I got to vote, breaking Jerry Cook's three-year mark of voting for the college in that meeting. And we discussed, among other things, topics related to sexual harassment, somewhat related to the incident with KU with a football player, but many of our other sister institutions have dormitories on campus, as you know, and other issues related to that. Guns on campus was a frequent and meaningful topic. I did chime in that I think that we could, like our K-12 institutions, perhaps require people to register at a specific point, which would then lower the cost of any kind of security we have on campus. But certainly, I think our administration and our law enforcement would be entitled to know who's on our campuses. That pretty much wraps up my report. I stand for any questions. I think that there were some other requests made of us, but on balance, I think it was, it's pretty informative for me. I enjoy western Kansas, my mother's from out there, so I'm happy to go. I'd offer to go to Parsons, Lebent County Community College will host in early December. And Linda Fund, the Executive Director, had a phrase, she said, over and over again, just so you know, it got burned in my brain, that there are two kinds of people in the legislature. There are friends and those who are not yet our friends. And so, I say that and repeat it like a mantra so that I may adopt it myself. But, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report and I'll stand for any questions or any.
Questions for Lee? Thank you. Our last reports from the foundation, trustee Ingram.
Absolutely. On September the 7th, the foundation held its annual scholarship celebration luncheon in the Rainier Center to recognize this year's foundation scholarship winners. Over 200 people attended and the tradition of wonderful student stories was shared. Thanks to trustee Cook, President Sobchak, Foundation Board President Brad Bergman, and Foundation Past President Stuart Stein for leading this special annual event. Over $550,000 has been raised for the Summit Chanted evening to date. The gala will be held on November the 12th at the Overland Park Marriott and sponsorships are wrapping up, so with just a few tables left available for purchase. Reverend Adam Hamilton will be honored at Johnson County end of the year at the gala. Special thanks to Brad and Libby Bergman for hosting a special Church of the Resurrection event at their home last week to honor Reverend Hamilton. More than 100 people attended and were able to hear from President Sobchak and learn about the impact of Johnson County Community College at this event. In addition, the Hamiltons announced they are establishing a scholarship endowment with the foundation to support students who are single parents. Several calendar reminders to share include the foundation directors, who will meet on September 20th in the COLAB. October 9th is the annual Lace Up for Learning 5K Runway, and October 10th is the foundation annual dinner with invitations soon to come out. And that concludes my report.
Questions? I would reiterate that Brad and Libby Bergman reception that was hosted with members of the, I don't know if that's the only people invited, Church of the Resurrection members where Pastor Hamilton preaches, but both Levon and Adam were products of single parents and they want to support the single parents that are trying to come to Johnson County Community College. It's going to be a great, it's going to be a great addition. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a series of routine items that are generally taken as one motion. They're discussed and voted on collectively. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and be debated separately and voted on separately. Are there any items that anybody would like to consider separately tonight? If not, I'm ready for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We have no executive session, but before we adjourn, I hope this is not a trend, but last month, we mentioned the fact that one of the key founders of this college, Ben Craig, had passed away on August 5th and we honored him at his memorial service in August. We lost another stalwart backer of this college, Will Billington, in between our last meeting and now. And his obituary is more than one column long, but I'll just mention that in the 1960s, his commitment to the community college effort led the county commissioners to appoint him to the group that evaluated whether Johnson County needed a community college. He was one of the key members that backed the bond issue in 1967, 68. He was the first chair of the community college, served two terms on the board. His record from Korean War service through his PhD and other work is amazing. Our library is named after him, so it's another part of this college that we need to honor. As we go about our business today, it didn't just happen, it's because people like Ben Craig and Will Billington had the vision to make it work. What's ironic to me is both of them were born in what are basically mining towns. Baxter Springs, Kansas, which had a history of mines and then a silver lead mining camp called Vulcan Mine Camp in Colorado, which is where Will Billington was born. So, both of them grew up in hardscrabble situations where life was not easy and the environment sucked. And they both turned into wonderful human beings and contributors to this college. So, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Moving second. All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you.